How could you do that?
She gets paid for it, so.
Welcome, everyone, to this Planning Commission meeting. The date is Monday, August 8, 2016. Will everyone please rise for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Next item on the agenda is actual approval of tonight's agenda. Does anyone have any questions or concerns? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on is the approval of the minutes for the July 11, 2016, meeting. Does anyone have any changes that need to take place or any concerns? If not, I will entertain a motion for that as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the Planning Commission minutes from July 11, 2016.
I'll second.
A motion and a second? Do I have a second? Did I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving right along, we have several public hearings today. And Julie, do you want to start us off and explain a little bit about why we're here with the public hearings?
I certainly will.
That would be great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, there are five public hearings before you this evening. They are all related and similar, but yet distinct. So I'll give a broad overview of the purpose for this process, and then, as we get to each public hearing, then, I intend to just focus on the specifics of that particular site. So as you recall, we recently, as a commission, reviewed a proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance to add schools as a permitted use in the public district. That amendment was prompted from staff finding that, back in 2010, there was a code amendment to eliminate the term "public facilities," under which schools were previously considered, eliminate that term and replace it with "public infrastructure," which was more narrowly defined to exclude public facilities such as schools. So in essence, back in 2010, what happened is schools became non-conforming uses. So, as staff shared at that time, we're proposing to remedy that situation in a twofold scenario. The first piece of that was the text amendment to allow schools as a use in the public district, and then, the second piece of that is coming back and rezoning the appropriate properties to the public zoning district. So as your memo points out, the independent school district, 272, owns seven properties in town. Three of those are currently zoned public, so should that text amendment ultimately be approved by council after they review it at their upcoming meetings, those three properties would become conforming immediately upon that text amendment being approved. The remaining four properties that are owned by the school district are being reviewed this evening in order to propose that they be rezoned to public. The comprehensive guide plan does guide all of these properties for public uses, so the rezonings in every case are consistent with the comprehensive plan. In addition, staff has looked at each individual site to identify any inconsistencies that might exist with code between what the properties -- all the properties are currently zoned rural, so any inconsistencies between the rural district and then, a potential rezoning to public in order to address those through a variance process. So there are, in all cases, rezoning is being proposed, and in some cases, variances to address site-specific conditions such as building height, or parking, or building setbacks. The final orders that staff has drafted up for those variances are contingent upon successful rezoning of the property, so the variance would not go into effect unless the public zoning happened. So the first public hearing this evening is for Cedar Ridge Elementary on Braxton Drive. So staff is recommending approval of the rezoning because it is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and a variance is also recommended to exceed the 30-foot height maximum. So when the school was constructed, it was -- and now, is within the rural zoning district. Maximum building height in that district is 40 feet. So the school, at one point, is roughly 37 feet tall, so of course, it was conforming with the rural zoning standards. Should the property be rezoned to public, the public zoning district has a maximum height of 30 feet, so staff is recommending a variance. The variance is limited to just the existing conditions on the site. It would not be a blanket variance that would apply to any future additions. Any additions that would come in beyond the 30-foot height limitation would need to go through a separate process in order to allow public input.
Okay, so just to be clear, for the first public hearing is Cedar Ridge Elementary School. The location of this project is 8905 Braxton Drive. Request is for zoning district change from rural to public on 23.19 acres, and a variance to exceed the 30-foot maximum height requirement for the existing structure. Do you have anything else to add to this?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, staff has been in contact with representatives from the school district. They are aware of the situation that staff is working to remedy. They have consented to the city moving forward with this process. They have been informed throughout the process. They have received copies of all of the staff reports as well.
And have they had any concerns specific with this Cedar Ridge Elementary School project?
Mr. Chair, they have not.
Okay. So commissioners, now's your time. Does anyone have any comments or concerns about this project? Yes, sir.
I have a more general question on timing, and I think this came up when -- I had already thought that our approval or our sending to council for approval on the code change had been enacted by council, and I guess that's coming up next week or a week after. Is there a reason why we're not waiting for that, the code change itself, to go forward before we implement various properties, principal properties, into that new enacted code?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as you recall, the Planning Commission's authority is advisory on text amendments and rezonings, so the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the text amendment at your July, I believe, July 11, meeting. So the next available public hearing that was available is the August 16, meeting. Staff, of course, will be sending that text amendment forward next week to the city council with your recommendation of approval. Staff is then following up with the rezonings in a timely manner so that they can follow pretty much sequentially, should council take positive action on the text amendment.
Just spitballing here, what if council does not follow our recommendation? Does this become a mute point, what we're doing tonight becoming a mute point?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if the council were to table the item or deny the ordinance amending that public zoning district, then we would have to have some follow-up conversations about what that meant for the school district and look at different alternatives.
Anything else?
I have nothing else, other than the timing angle and the sequence of it all. I know that we're advisory, but advising what we're doing tonight based on something that hasn't been enacted by the body itself, by the council body itself, seems like putting the cart before the horse. I don't have a problem with doing this kind of due diligence work and correcting some of the inaccuracies in the code. I just think systematically, unless there's a time constraint, a time crunch for the comprehensive guide plan update, it's going to be starting to happen any time shortly after this is a progression of events. We're just trying to be as efficient as possible. That's my only concern. It's more in a general nature, not in a specific project nature or site nature.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, we are trying to address this issue. Once it came to the attention of staff, we certainly don't want the school district properties to remain in a non-conforming status any longer than they need be, so we're looking to remedy this as quickly as possible. With schedules, meeting schedules and such, we're just trying to keep this item moving forward and do that education and outreach to the appropriate people and bring everybody along the way.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, anything else?
If I can pose a question, many schools, when they're originally designed or master-planned for future expansions, our city may be peaking in school enrollment and may be going down in the future. However, did the school district address any risk of possible future expansions such that they would have to either ask for another variance if they expanded a school for any reason, or have they thought about that and they're either convinced they're not going to be expanded ever, or their master plans include enough space?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as part of staff's outreach to the school district on this issue, there was not an in-depth, broader conversation about all the schools and any potential expansions they might have. Certainly, if any of the schools were to propose an expansion, they would likely have to go through a site plan review process, which is a public review process anyway, regardless of whether or not their requests included any waivers or things of that sort.
Anything else from the commission? Seeing that this is a public hearing, is there anyone out in the audience that has any concerns? Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion for this one.
Mr. Chairman, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, move to recommend approval of the zoning district change from rural to public on 23.19 acres, and final order 2016-06, based on the information included in the staff report dated August 3, 2016.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to the second public hearing tonight. The second one is Oak Point Elementary School. Location of this project is 13400 Staring Lake Parkway. Request is for zoning district change from rural to public on 23.05 acres, and a variance to address the existing setback requirements. With that being said, will city staff please take us through this report, please?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, of course, the same backstory applies to this property as well. For this property, again, the comprehensive plan guides for public uses. Existing zoning is rural, so a regiding to public is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The variance contemplated for this specific site addresses the setbacks for the existing parking lot along Anderson Lakes Parkway and Staring Lake Road. Again, it is reflective of the existing conditions only, and the variance, as written, would apply only to the existing conditions and would not apply to any subsequent expansion plans for that parking lot. Staff is recommending approval.
Okay. Commissioners, any concerns about this Oak Point Elementary School project? Yes, sir.
I thought I saw reading something in the annotated agenda on a maximum height on this property as well, or was I getting that one confused with another one?
I think the main one on this was setbacks. Right.
Okay, never mind, yep.
Commissioners, anything else? Seeing this is a public hearing, anybody in the audience? No? Okay. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I would move to recommend approval of the zoning district change from rural to public on 23.05 acres, and final order 2016-07, based on the information included in the staff report dated August 3, 2016.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on to variance number three, Eden Lake Elementary School. The location of the project is 12,000, 12,000 Anderson Lake Parkway. The request is for zoning district change from rural to public on 23.46 acres, and a variance to address existing setback requirements. With that being said, Julie, you want to take us through this specific one, please?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, again, this property in the comp plan is guided for public use, so the rezoning to public is consistent. Site-specific to this issue, the variances address building height. It's the same situation that the Cedar Ridge Elementary had. Property within the rural district has a height of 40 feet, so at the time that the building was constructed, it was conforming. The potential rezoning has a building height of only 30 feet, so we are proposing, at a staff level, recommending approval of the variance to address the existing height and also to address the reduced setbacks for the existing parking lot similar to the just previous public hearing that you conducted. So again, the variances are reflective of the existing conditions only and would not apply to future expansion plans for the school. Staff is recommending approval.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioners, any comments or concerns? None? Julie, I am noticing one thing, just so that you're aware. I'm noticing on the staff reports, as I'm going through the notes, that each one of these variances has a number, specifically the Eden Prairie or Eden Lake Elementary one is variance number 2016-08.
Correct.
And I'm not seeing that on the agenda in the notes. I don't know if that's a big issue or not, but I'm just letting you know.
Mr. Chair, in the annotated agenda, you'll see the motion includes, in this particular case, recommend approval of zoning district change rural to public, provides acreage, and final order 2016-08.
Okay.
Based on information in the staff report.
Very good. Are there any concerns, commissioners, about this project?
I move to close the public hearing.
Let me open the public hearing. Is there anyone out in the audience that has any comments or concerns? No? Okay. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
I will now move to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will move also to recommend approval of the zoning district change from rural to public on 23.46 acres, and the final order 2016-8, oh eight, based on information included in the staff report dated August 3, 2016.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to number four, Forest Hills Elementary School. The location of this project is 13708 Holly Lane. The request is for zoning district change from rural to public on 28.31 acres, and a variance to address the existing setback requirements. With that being said, Julie, will you take us through your staff report for this item?
Mr. Chair, members of the -- excuse me, tongue-tied there, Planning Commission, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning as it is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan to rezone to public. Staff is recommending approval of variance to allow reduced setbacks for the existing building and the parking lot in their existing configuration. At the time that the development plan for the school was reviewed, it was reviewed -- as you can see, this school is nestled among city property, and it was reviewed in its totality as an individual project or campus, if you will. So staff is recommending approval of the variance in order to bring the property into conforming status with the zoning ordinance with regard to setbacks.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any comments or concerns about this particular project? Not seeing any, knowing that this is a public hearing. Is there anyone out? No, there is not. Okay. Moving right along. With that being said, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to move to recommend approval of the zoning district change from rural to public on 28.31 acres, and final order 2016-09, based on the information included in the staff report dated August 3, 2016.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on, the last one is Hennepin Technical College. This is variance number 2016-10. Location of this project is 13100 College View Drive. The request is for zoning district change from rural to public on 104.38 acres, and a variance to address the existing setback requirements. With that being said, Julie, will you give us the staff report, please?
Mr. Chair, Hennepin Technical College is currently located on property that is within the rural zoning district. Again, the comprehensive plan guides this property for public use. We do have three parcels that are subject to the Hennepin Technical College's campus, so as you can see from the drawing, there are parking lots and building setback issues with that property configuration. So staff is recommending approval of the variances to reflect the existing conditions on site, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have on this issue.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for city staff at all?
Just to confirm the assumption that the Hennepin Technical College folks have been engaged in the appropriate conversations.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, just as with the independent school district staff has reached out to Hennepin Technical College and has received their consent to move forward with the rezoning and the variances to address existing conditions, and they also have been provided copies of the staff report as well, and staff has not had any specific questions or concerns raised.
Okay. Good question. Yes, sir.
In lieu of variances, is there an option on this particular property to go through a lot consolidation process? In other words, why do they have multiple properties with a single building spreading over the property lines?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the technical college itself was constructed in the early '70s, and the property records are a bit fuzzy as to when those three properties were created, when those three individual parcels were created. So without having the specific history on what prompted the creation of three parcels, you know, there is an opportunity or an option that the Hennepin Technical College could consolidate their properties. That is something that they would have to, you know, address through a separate application and recording with Hennepin County as well to eliminate those lot lines. So staff is recommending approval of the variance process similar to the school district properties for continuity through the process.
Was that for an answer?
That's an appropriate answer. I'm not sure I agree with the pursuant variances when there could be a pathway for full compliance with a simple lot consolidation process.
I would agree with you on that.
My opinion.
Julie, what are your thoughts on that?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, staff has identified an issue that has raised a concern for a school district and Hennepin Technical College properties that resulted from a city action back in 2010. So we are, at a staff level, working to try and resolve that as quickly and as efficiently as possible. In the event that Hennepin Technical College, in the future, decided to do or pursue, go through a lot combination process, the variances will have already been approved, but they will essentially be unnecessary at that point. Even though they are approved, they are limited to the existing conditions, so the city is not in the position of opening itself up for other expansions that could cross property lines or exceed height requirements or anything like that, because it is, the variance as it's drafted, is drafted in a very tight manner in order to address the existing conditions only.
A follow-up question, Julie. Is it fair to say that, to do the lot consolidation, the Hennepin Technical College would have to invest probably time and effort and potentially money to do research, and perhaps they're just unwilling to do that at this point in time?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I can't speak to whether or not Hennepin Technical College is willing to do that, but I can speak to the fact that it certainly would require them to make an investment in time and resources in order to go through that process.
I just made the comment that it sounds like they're just taking the path of least resistance in this case.
I agree.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, in all fairness, this is the process that staff did recommend to them as a way to rectify the situation that we found ourselves in.
Great. And if they didn't --
I didn't mean to imply any criticism at all.
None taken. I just wanted to clarify so that everyone understood the same position.
Right. And I think as long as they're well aware of it, and it sounds like they are, then...
If this project were to get redeveloped for an alternative use, would staff's position be to rezone to PUD?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if this property were to be redeveloped for an alternative use, whether that's residential, commercial, something of that sort, there would be a separate and very detailed public process that would need to be gone through to address that. Right now, the property, as I said, is zoned rural. The potential, or request before you this evening, is to rezone to public, so it would require a comp plan guide change as well as a rezoning to do something different other than those uses that are permitted in the public district, which is a very limited list.
Okay. Is there anyone out in the audience that has any comments or concerns? No? Okay. Commissioners, any other final thoughts? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 I would move to recommend approval of the zoning district change from rural to public on 104.38 acres, and final order 2016-10, based on the information included in the staff report dated August 3, 2016.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. One nay. Okay. Project passes. With that being said, are there any planners' reports tonight, Julie?
Mr. Chair, there is a planner's report. I'd like to promote the Spirit of Eden Prairie Award. If you'll notice in front of you, there's a little postcard that kind of explains this program. It is a program that recognizes investments and enhancements that are made by property owners that address overall vitality, sustainability, and accessibility within the community. So the nomination forms are very simple and straightforward. Basically, they ask for your name, what category the subject property is in, the name and address of the property owner, and why the nominee feels that that property is worthy of the Spirit of Eden Prairie Award. And there are several different categories. There are single-family, residential, multifamily, as well as commercial and industrial as well. So the nomination forms can be found on the city's website, so if you know of some properties, please feel free to nominate or share those ideas with your neighbors as well to promote some involvement with the Spirit of Eden Prairie Awards.
Great. Thank you. Anything else from a planner's perspective for tonight?
No, thank you.
Any members' reports for tonight?
I guess maybe I'll make one or two quick comments or something.
Sure.
Noticed recently that our city parks have been heavily trafficked, which is nice.
Hmm. Yes.
I think --
To the youth, yes.
I think perhaps it's because of an augmented reality video game system. I would like to remind those that are watching, which are probably very slimmed a few, but the parents, to encourage their kids and loved ones to get out and be active, but also to refrain from damage to private and public property. I've been reading and talking with some people around the country that some unfortunate incidents have occurred at historical places and cemeteries and then the whatnot due to this kind of behavior, and I'd rather not see that in the city of Eden Prairie.
Okay.
I have one other comment that could, as long as you brought it up, I wasn't really planning to say anything. However, the area near Furtor Creek, near the road there, too. Today, I was in there about one o'clock -- oh, sorry, I was in that area earlier this afternoon, and there were quite a number of people crossing back and forth across Technology Drive with little regard for the fact that there are vehicles of all kinds, and also there's construction in that area. And it does raise additional matters that I think would be important. I'm sure the city has taken note of it, and I was not prepared for seeing that many people at 2:00 in the afternoon on a weekday, so...
Try 1:00 in the morning.
Yeah, well, that, too. But I'm not out there at 1:00 in the morning yet.
Matt, while we're talking about it briefly, has there been any talk about changing anything? I know the police have posted signs along certain paths, trails and whatnot.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, we have had meetings with Pokemon Go Minnesota, kind of one of their leading members. It's a group of about 2,000, 3,000 or even more now members in Minnesota. Just to kind of reiterate some of the park rules and then also hear some of the concerns that they've brought up, police have put out a number of kind of postings and blogs to remind players to be safe while they're doing it and some ways to do that. So there has been conversations. Obviously, we're getting some phone calls, both good and bad, about the use, and continue to kind of monitor it for now.
Okay. Sounds good. Any other new members' reports for tonight? Okay. Continuing business? Any new business? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.